Welcome to this October 25 meeting of the New London Planning Board. I am Paul Gorman and I am the Chair of the Planning Board. And since there are a lot of people here who don't know us, there's a couple of introductory comments I'd like to make because there seems to be some misunderstanding about the work that we do, at least in the sense that we are all volunteers. We don't get paid, I can assure you of that. We volunteer our time to the town and act as members of this planning board to implement the ordinances that govern the building and land use in the town of New London, all of which are brought to the town meeting for its review and approval. And I think that's an important thing to remember as we continue our discussion this evening. So what I'd like to do to begin with is to start with Mary Ann over here and have each one of us introduce ourselves to you so you'll know who we are.
My name's Mary Ann McEnroe and I've been on the board-
Microphone, Mary Ann.
My name's Mary Ann McEnroe and I've been on the board for probably three or four terms, I can't remember which. And this is one of the largest crowds we've had in a long time, so I welcome your comments. Thank you very much for coming.
I'm Joe Hubert, we live on Barrett Road, I'm in the third year of my second term on the planning board.
Hi, my name is Paul Vance, I live on Bunker Road and I've been on the board, I think, four and a half years.
Hi, I'm Tim Parody, I live on Siemens Road and I don't actually remember how long I've been on the board, but it's been awhile.
And I'm Paul Gorman, I'm the Chair of the Board echoing what Tim said, I've been on it for awhile, but I don't know how long.
I do get paid, I'm not a volunteer, I'm the Town Planner, Adam Ricker. And this is just the reminder that we are recording this tonight, this is the first time we've recorded a planning board meeting, so you should have access to that on YouTube within the week.
I'm Janet Kitter and this is my fourth term as selectman in the town of New London. I've been on the planning board for probably six years and I live on Blueberry Lane in New London.
Hello, I'm Jeremy Bonan, live and work in New London and this is year nine on the planning board and I'm Vice Chair.
Good evening, my name is David Royal, I'm on my second term, I live in Hilltop Place.
Hello, I'm Katie Vedeva, this is my first term, at the end of my first term, and I live on Dixie Drive, right off of South Pleasant.
Thank you, you all. So that's us, and we welcome all of you and I'm glad that you're here. Obviously, we're not accustomed to this kind of a crowd at our meetings, as a matter of fact, many times we're the only ones in the room when we meet. So obviously, there's a lot of interest in the issues that's coming up this evening and we hope that you will find our discussion useful and helpful to you. There are a couple of introductory things that I'd like to make clear to you. First of all, it's important to understand that the discussion that we're going to have in a moment, and the presentation that we're going to have in a moment, is preliminary. We are here to be, in a sense, taught by the developer and answer our questions, that is, the questions of the members of the board. And then eventually, when that process is finished, we'll ask you for your questions and issues that you want to be sure that we hear and understand. So there's three parts to this evening's discussion that I'm sure ninety-nine and forty-four and hundreds percent of you here are here for. That is, first, the applicant will present their proposal for the property that is behind the shopping center, for lack of a more accurate term, the six acres that's behind the shopping center. And then the board will have the opportunity to ask its questions of the presenters, clarifying issues, clarifying issues for us, since ultimately, we're the ones that have to vote on this proposal. And then we will give all of you the opportunity to talk. I will tell you, however, that I'm absolutely ruthless and I will limit you to five minutes, no more, no less. And that's what we're going to do, and that's not open to discussion. Okay? Alright. So you understand the ground rules, if you will, of this evening's meeting. So ordinarily, we would be busy at this task point in our meeting, reviewing the minutes of previous meetings, but we're going to dispense with that tonight because of the large group that's here and move right on. Also, another thing we usually do at the beginning of our meetings is I ask whoever is here if there are people here who want to make a comment about an issue that is not, the word here is "not," on our agenda. If there's anyone here who has another issue that they want to bring to our attention, now's the time to do it. Well, that was a unanimous statement, thank you very much. Okay. So, we're now at the point in our agenda where we're at the fourth issue, which is a preliminary site review for applicants for Twin Pines Housing Trust with regard to the six acres of property that are immediately south of the shopping center in New London, and what Twin Pines is proposing to do with those. So, we're going to proceed in this way. They're going to make their presentation, then we, the board, are going to have the opportunity to dialogue with them about what they're telling us, and ask them questions about that, and ask them for clarifications. And at the end of that process, we will then open it to the floor. But again, I want to reiterate, you have five minutes to talk. And if you hear somebody who has already said what you wanted to say, then your value, in my eyes, will go up exponentially if you just don't bother. Okay? Okay. So let's begin. I'm happy to introduce to you Andrew Winter, who is the Executive Director of Twin Pines, and he will begin with his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andrew Winter, Executive Director at Twin Pines Housing Trust, I'm delighted to be here this evening with you again. We were last before you in September for schematic plan review, we took into consideration some of the comments that you've seen, we've now, I brought the full panoply of talent that we have at our disposal, Aaron Lambert, our engineer is here today, Matt Giffen from Banwell Architects is here, he was not with us last time, Christina Harold, our project manager, former resident here in New London, I like to put that out there, who is working with us at Twin Pines on the project, Ken Viscarello, you don't need him, he's our attorney, so he's, but he does live here part-time in New London, delighted to have him here. David Crandall is also here from Twin Pines staff, David is our Director of Development and Communications, he's a New London resident, he doesn't do real estate, you don't want a phone call from this guy because he's looking for money, he's that kind of development guy. But he is a resident here and delighted to have him here as part of our communications team going forward. So I wanted to introduce our team, you may hear from some folks, others you may just safely ignore now. So a little bit about Twin Pines, we're a nonprofit, we have been around for thirty-two years, I've got a fifteen-person Board of Directors, we're actually headquartered in White River Junction, but we have five hundred and thirty-nine rental units across the Upper Valley. We manage about, we own, develop, and manage affordable housing, but we manage about four hundred of those units, we have third-party managers for a slice of the housing that we have. We've got sixty-four homeownership units. We do the rental housing and the ownership that we do, we sort of do everything that touches housing. And I've got pictures up here that include workforce housing, Summer Park, senior housing in Hanover, that's forty-two units of senior housing, there's some folks who are disabled living in there, we've also got some folks who were previously homeless. That project is located right across from the high school in Hanover and we worked very closely with the town of Hanover in developing that. But we provide, you know, basically, housing for homeless folks in some projects, housing for workforce in others, and housing that is focused on seniors in yet another group. So, a little bit about what we're doing here, so we're looking to develop roughly a seven-acre parcel, which includes the former Crescenti, or currently the Crescenti Farmstead, right there on County Road at two sixty-eight farm, two sixty-eight County Road, as well as a slice of land behind it and behind the shopping center that are comprised, seven point eight acres. And we are proposing sixty apartment buildings in four fifteen-unit buildings, a combination of one and two-bedroom units, heavily weighted towards one-bedroom units, we've heard that that's what the market needs, and our market research has indicated, as well as a slice of twenty-two bedroom homes. We've got residence storage and laundry in each building, we're actually going to take some of the old farmstead and repurpose it. One of the things we've been looking at is the idea of repurposing the farmhouse, excuse me, not the farmhouse, but the barn structure that was built, and I know Jim's here, nineteen twenty-eight, twenty-seven?
The barn was thirty-three.
Thirty-three, okay, so I'm close. But as I understand it, was constructed somewhere between Thanksgiving and Christmas after the prior barn burned down. But we're looking to repurpose that as a community room with a small rental office, but a community room for the benefit of the residents there. So if somebody wants to have a birthday party for their children, they've got a place onsite to do that. And then we'll also have in that space, a package room and mailroom. One of the things that we are looking at here is having a resident manager who would live onsite. And all of the units will be workforce housing aimed to folks making between sixty percent and eighty percent of the area median income. What does that mean? What is area median income? Well, every year HUD looks at the entire country, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and figures out what the incomes are in every county, every municipality across the country. So for us, what we're looking to do is aim to create housing for folks between sixty percent and eighty percent. So you can see on this chart, we're talking about people making forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year. And I know that there are folks here who are eager to talk about who those folks are, to put some faces to that description of who we're talking about, but it could be the person working at the hospital, it could be the person working at the college, it could be the person serving you coffee at Blue Loom, it could be the person working at the local bank as a teller. Those are folks who are going to qualify for the kind of workforce housing that we're talking about here. So, again, a little bit about the property, we've got it outlined in red here, you can see the shopping center to the north, Fenwood to the west, to the east, the hospital, and the balance of the Crescenti Farm property to the south. What we're talking about is this property for housing. And I'm delighted at this point to sort of turn it over to Matt Giffen and let him kind of go through the pretty pictures that he put together for what it might look like in terms of massing. But again, the idea is four buildings, and he'll talk through some of the specifics.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just going to step back, it's weird looking at a screen with everyone behind me. So again, I'm Matt Giffen, I work for Banwell Architects, I'm the project manager for this project. I have previously worked with Andrew and Christina on the Summer Park project, the forty-two unit building in Hanover. So this is my second or third go-around with Twin Pines. And we have Aaron Lambert from Wilcox and Barton, she's a civil engineer, she'll be presenting the site after me. We thought it would be important to introduce what the architecture is of this building first, to give you a little bit of context before we get into the site. So as Andrew previously mentioned, there are a total of sixty units on the property. We had considered how to arrange those sixty units, so in downtown Hanover, for example, that being a forty-two unit building, it was all in one building, three stories, just a big building. And that's the most economical way to design buildings of that scale, but we did not feel that that was appropriate for New London. New London's more of a small-scale residential type of neighborhood, so that's why we broke it up into four different buildings. So rather than one large sixty-unit, three-story building, we have four smaller, two-story, fifteen-unit buildings. In each building, there are fifteen one-beds and five two-beds, for a total of forty one-bedroom apartments and twenty-two beds, so I hope I did that math right. I'll show you a floor plan nearing the end of this, but a little bit more about the building itself. So as you can see, I didn't get all crazy, design some super-modern building, we tried to stay a traditional New England style with gable roof, a couple of dormers, really wanted this to blend in as much as a fourteen thousand square foot, seven thousand square feet per story building could look in New London. Some cool features about this building, something that Twin Pines as a company has really embraced is energy efficiency. So this building will be designed to meet passive house standards. A lot of people don't really know what that means, but you have heard of things such as a net-zero building or a LEED-certified building, passive house really fits into that category. So a lot of people would describe passive house as one of the world's most stringent energy standards, and they look at three things: energy efficiency, durability, and comfort. So, energy efficiency, self-explanatory, uses minimal fossil fuels, it's almost entirely electrified, excuse me, so we'll have solar panels onsite, mostly on the building, but may need to consider ground mounted, story for a different day. Durability, that is just long-term durability of the building, so preventing condensation in the walls from, that might turn into mold, for example. And then lastly, comfort, comfort, everything from when you're standing next to the window versus standing at the very, very far end of the room, there can only be a three-degree difference. So at any point in that building, you're always going to be feeling the same temperature, plus or minus a few degrees. Strict air sealing in these buildings, so that prevents a breeze from coming in from outside, but it also prevents the smell of fish being cooked in the apartment over from getting into your house. So those three categories are really the main points of passive house. So a few other aspects on the site, as Andrew mentioned, we are repurposing the existing barn, so it's a beautiful, historic, classic New Hampshire-style barn, currently there's hay in there, I believe. And the idea for that would be to winterize that, make it a four-season building, that would not be designed to passive house standards, that would be designed to typical energy code standards. But that would be where the community room would be located, and I know Andrew mentioned this earlier, but community room, mailroom, a couple different offices, and bathrooms. So that's where birthday parties, for example, would be held. There is an existing garage onsite that would be kept and used as a garage, and the existing farmhouse where the owner currently lives, we went back and forth on how to utilize that building, I visited the site a few times, took various measurements inside, checked the condition of the building itself, and ultimately deemed it would be too cost prohibitive to be able to utilize that building for what Twin Pines needs. Combine that with the fact that when looking at traffic and considering the traffic patterns, you really want the entrance and exit to this site to be opposite the hospital entrance. When that drive is offset by ten, fifteen, thirty feet, that actually creates a really confusing traffic situation and can be dangerous. So we've aligned the entrance to our property with the hospital, and that actually makes for a much safer way to get in and out of the site. What am I, so as far as, I'm wrapping it up here, as far as why the site is laid out the way it is, so for passive house reasons, you really want the length of the building to be facing south. So when we get into the floor plans, and I can move ahead a little bit, all of those buildings are within a couple of degrees facing due south. And for those who are familiar with the site, thankfully, due south is a beautiful view, it's looking down into this field, and it's really a great sight as far as sun exposure and views go. So in this view, you can see on the bottom of the screen, that's the entrance, the hospital entrance is just across the street. You enter the site, on the left is the barn and the garage. I think I've got a view from the street, let me find it. Well, we want, we plan to have some gardens onsite, whether that's a flower garden, vegetable garden, something for the community. Oh, I guess we don't have a view from the street. But I want to review the floor plans real quick. So each building will have a main lobby, so you, everyone would enter through the main entrance, you would pass the storage room, so everyone has storage onsite in addition to the storage that would be inside of their apartments. There would be the electrical room, multiple stairs to get upstairs, and then on the bottom right corner of the first floor plan on the left there, you can see a laundry room. So each building would have their own laundry facility.
Do you have a laser?
Oh, is there? I've never used one of these things.
This is grand, but not on laundry.
Okay, oh, there we go, okay. Laundry room, main entrance, storage room, mechanical, electrical, and once you get in, you can go up the stairs either here or here. And then once you get upstairs, there's a separate kind of storage facility. So, lastly, I'll turn this over to Aaron, but in one of the comments was a question about school bus. There was concern that if there are some kids getting picked up on the school bus, where does that school bus stop? And the concern was that if the school bus was on County Road, what would that do to the traffic during peak travel times? And of course, we need to review this with the bus service and the school, but what we would imagine is the bus could actually enter the site, the children could be waiting inside the community room because there'll be a large window that looks out at the main entrance, and so everyone will be protected from the weather and whatnot, they'll see the bus enter the site, and the bus will actually go into the site, turn around, and come back and pick them up there. So during that thirty seconds or so it takes for the bus to turn around, they can all scoot out and get ready. So we think that's a great solution. So from here, I think I will turn this over to Aaron. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for teeing it up so wonderfully, both Matt and Andrew. So let me dive a little bit into the details. So the plan that I'm starting with is just to give you an overview, you saw the 3D images, but it's a little bit different when we start looking at it in a 2D format, so I just wanted to orient you, on the right side going up and down the page is County Road, you'll see our proposed driveway is directly across the street from the entrance to the New London Hospital.
Use the laser.
Ow, sorry. New London Hospital, so our entrance is directly aligned. The shopping plaza is located to the north, and this is the residential of Butter Fenwood to the west, and this is that field that Andrew showed you earlier, to the south. So this is our site plan. As they mentioned, we're doing four buildings, each building has fifteen units in it, we have labeled them one, two, three, and four, so as you drive in, building one would be on your right, two, three, four. These may change with 911 and whatnot, but we at least wanted to have numbers on the building, so if people have questions about each building, they're uniquely labeled. So it's a two-way driveway when you come into the site. We have purposely tried to decentralize the parking. We didn't want to have one large parking lot and have it look like the shopping plaza across the street, so we have aimed to place parking close to each of the uses, so you'll notice there's parking next to each building, as well as next to the community room, which will also serve as the mailroom and the package pickup. There are ADA parking spaces scattered throughout the site, there are two, at least two for each building, and two at the community rooms, there are eight on the site. I should say that that would add up to eight. There's two at building one, one at building two, two near building three, and then the others near building four in the community room. You're currently looking at a hundred and three parking spaces, so we'll talk about the waiver request that we have in a little bit. So the idea would be that there is a parking lot next to building one, and then it transitions to a one-way loop road. Partly that's to assist with wayfinding and it also reduces the width of the pavement. We wouldn't want to have, we're trying to reduce our impervious cover to the extent that we can. There are, let me see, if I go to the next slide, I think I added a little bit of color to help us out. So these are some of the additional site features that we're incorporating into the plan. The green boxes in the middle are community gardens, we're also proposing a ten-foot-by-twenty-foot pavilion, which would be an outdoor gathering space for the use of the community, planning to have a playground of some sort in that same vicinity. And then, much less interesting but equally important, there'll be dumpsters strategically located at two different locations, so there'll be a trash and a recycling between building four and the community building, as well as in the back near building two. They will be fully screened, so what you'll see will be an eight-foot-high stockade, likely vinyl fence, so you will not see those, but it will have easy access for residents to walk in and drop off both their trash and their recycling. The site plan does also account for snow storage around the site, and we're still working to coordinate that with the landscaping, but certainly, we recognize the need to provide for adequate snow storage, given the volume of snow we tend to see in the winter months. The next thing I want to talk a little bit about is the drainage. So obviously, we're going from a site that's currently, you know, grassy field, former farmland, and we're adding buildings and parking. So what we've done is decentralized the stormwater. Your ordinance actually really encourages this and we love that. So basically, there are going to be small little drainage controls scattered throughout the site. And what that helps us do is it helps us eliminate having that one big drainage, you know, detention pond that's unsightly and full of water, and we need to make sure we have adequate fencing and safety to keep kids out. So we will not have any standing water type of ponds on the property, we have a combination of grass-lined swales, bio-retention systems, there is a pond in the lower left corner, but it's not one of the ones that holds water permanently, it may have water in it immediately after a storm and then that water will infiltrate. We are incorporating permeable pavers, so at the entrance to the community room, we've conceived of a small gathering area, and those pavers will be permeable, meaning that stormwater will pass through them. So we've tried to incorporate a lot of, you know, interesting and low-impact development techniques into the project, things that are reasonable to install, at the same time easy to maintain. The project does require a New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit, and what that means is that we are disturbing more than a hundred thousand square feet, which means the state then takes a look at the stormwater treatment and controls. So everything that we're designing is being designed to a very high standard, it will not only meet the town of New London regulations, but it will meet the state stormwater regulations as well. So one of the things that we are also doing, which isn't quite as much fun, but in the upper right corner, this will all be below ground, but there'll be what we call mechanical treatments, so there'll be some pipes holding stormwater and mechanical filters, basically just making sure that we are truly treating and controlling all the runoff. What that means for everybody here is that the runoff that leaves the site post-development will be no more, and will hopefully be less than what's leaving the site today, that is our charge, and we look at that all the way up through a hundred-year storm. Super exciting stuff, I know. The other really important thing that's part of our site plan package are the utilities, both water and sewer exist in County Road, admittedly sewer not quite as close as we were hoping. Sewer exists up across from the shopping plaza and is really shallow, it's only three feet deep, which if anyone knows, it should be a lot deeper than that to have frost protection. So we are working through our options for providing sewer, we've reached out to the DPW to talk to them about what other options exist in the area. If there are none, we may be faced with putting in a small pump station on our property. What that means is that we would design gravity flow to a pump station and then have a force main that goes from that pump station to the nearest sewer manhole, and that would all be designed in accordance with New Hampshire DES standards. We would be required to submit a design and obtain a permit from them to build and install a pump station. So we are hoping to avoid that, but it may be something that we're required to do. And the other major utility that you're seeing on this plan in blue is water. Water does exist right at our frontage in County Road, we're proposing to bring in either a six or an eight-inch main, the buildings will be fully sprinkled, so once we know a little bit more about the water pressures that are out there in County Road, we will know if that needs to be an eight, it's currently designed as a six. Each building will have a separation outside- Each building will have a separation outside. And what that means is it will separate for two, from a domestic, to a domestic service and a sprinkler service, and they'll each have their own shut-off. So God forbid somebody didn't pay their water bill. You have the ability to turn off the domestic, not compromise sprinkler. And really, it's there as a protection if people need to do maintenance. You can do maintenance on the plumbing and the domestic water without needing to compromise the safety and security of having your sprinkler system. We did meet with the New London Springfield Water Precinct in early October. They're aware of the project. We have a preliminary application pulled together, ready to submit to them. It will get reviewed by Underwood, who is their review engineer. And we've already been talking to Underwood about how we're doing our use calculations, because I think that is the biggest thing that we need to know, is if the water precinct can commit to being able to provide water for our project. So those conversations are ongoing. We had a really positive meeting with them in October. The ball is in our court. That permit is almost ready to be submitted, so we will get that in shortly. All of the electric telecom will all be underground. I didn't highlight it, but it will kind of run the same course through the site. We are in the process of developing a landscape plan. So as you saw from Matt's renderings, we have a vision for providing street trees. They're required by your ordinance, but they're also something that we really, you know, it creates a neighborhood, and it creates a comforting area, and it, it provides a little bit of shade to reduce the heat island effect from us adding pavement. So this is hot off the press. I just got this from my landscape architect yesterday. But this gives you an idea of what we're proposing. So there will be street trees, shade trees, spread throughout the project, you know, with the, with the intention of providing shade to the parking lot. And then additionally, we will be adding shrubs and maybe some perennial plantings at the front of each building. So the entrance will have, you know, that addressed. And then we're also looking at the possibility of adding some plantings at the courtyard, again, to enhance that experience. If people are sitting outside, it'd be nice to have some greenery, some vegetation, some flowers. They will all be native and adaptive species. We are not planning on putting sprinklers. We're not putting irrigation on the project. So we will need to look at the types of plantings we're doing to make sure that they are adaptive to our environment. We don't want to put in a lot of plantings that are maintenance-intensive or water-intensive. So we will have a more detailed plan for you shortly. All right. The other thing I wanted to mention is, as we've been doing our design and sort of moving that forward, we've been working with a partner who's doing construction estimating. And as you can imagine, construction costs are extremely high. So we've been charged with taking a look at, is there a way that we could consolidate the site to further reduce pavement and to further reduce some of our site work cost? So I wanted to walk through the plan we've presented, and I wanted to give you a little bit of a preview of what we think we're, we may do. We definitely need, still need to keep that good internal circulation. Needs to work for the residents, but it especially needs to work for emergency vehicles or the school bus if they're coming through. So this is a concept that we are working through. As you can see, it retains a lot of the elements that you saw. All of the utilities will work the same, drainage will be very similar. But what it does is it reduces one of the parking lots, and it reduces the, you know, the, the drive that we had going around, around the large center green. We'd have a smaller green in the center of the cul-de-sac, but we would just look to other ways for us to create spaces for our residents to enjoy the outdoors. So we're thinking in this scenario, we would have, this would be the pavilion. It would still be accessible. We would definitely bring sidewalks to it to make everything on the site fully accessible. We imagine having a playground in that similar area, as well as the community gardens. So this is where we're, we're probably headed. So in, you know, trans, full transparency, I just wanted to share that. So we do have a parking waiver in front of the board tonight that we would, we're hoping that you'll be able to rule on. And then we have another one that we wanted to talk to you about. It's not yet submitted, but as we were going through the project, we think it makes a lot of sense. So thank you for the opportunity to present it. So we are requesting a reduction in the number of parking spaces. We talked about this last month when we were before the board at the conceptual. The ordinance requires two parking spaces per unit. So with the 60 units we're building, the project requires 120 parking spaces. We have 41-bedroom and 22-bedroom. So we already recognize that two parking spaces is more than we need. We have evidence from other projects that Twin Pine owns and operates, and we also recognize that some of our residents are going to be living near places of work, whether it's the hospital or other places in town. So we are requesting a waiver to reduce the number of parking spaces closer to one and a half per unit, which would be a minimum of 90 parking spaces. The site plan we submitted to you shows 103, of which eight spaces are ADA accessible. And the, the consolidated plan, the value engineering plan, engineering plan we're working on, we think would have more likely 94 or 98. What we'd like to propose is, is something in that range. If we can get to 98, it would mean we'd have 90 standard spaces, which would meet the one and a half per unit. And in addition to that, we'd also have eight ADA accessible spaces. So we feel that provides the right balance. We, none of us want to build pavement that's not needed. So I think this provides that balance. We've also looked at the site, and we see opportunities where, if for some reason the parking analysis that we are basing this on doesn't come to fruition, and a little more parking is needed, there's places where we could add that without disrupting the other things we're building. So it provides that flexibility, while at the same time, I think preserving open space, which is, you know, equally important as, as providing parking. The other parking waiver that I'd like to, to discuss is the size of the spaces. The way the ordinance reads, the width of the space determines how deep the aisle needs to be. It says the ordinance is looking for approximately nine-by-20-foot spaces. However, a nine-foot space would require a 26-foot aisle, which admittedly is pretty large. If we could, instead of having 10-by-20-foot spaces, if we could have nine-by-19, they would still feel comfortable. We're not looking to have a parking lot that's uncomfortable, where the spaces are too small for people to, you know, easily get in and out and function on a daily basis. But if we could reduce them from 10-by-20 to nine-by-19, we could save approximately 3,000 square feet of pavement, which is about tempered, which is about 5%, excuse me, of the pavement that we're putting on the site. I caveat that with, we will work with fire department to ensure that all of the circulation provides ample access for emergency vehicles. I did look at some other ordinances in the area that I'm familiar with. In Hanover, the spaces are required to be eight-by-18 with a 24-to-26-foot aisle. So the ordinance, much like yours, provides some discretion to make it site-specific. Lebanon requires nine-by-18 with a 24-foot aisle, and Concord is nine-by-19 with a 24-foot aisle. So we're looking to, to be somewhere in the middle, nine-by-19 with a 24-foot aisle. We think would still provide ease for parking and access getting in and out, but it would reduce our lock coverage a little bit. And thus, you know, it ripples through. It's less pavement that we have to build, maintain, less stormwater control we have to build. So it's really a net benefit. We have reached out to the fire chief. We spoke with Captain Matthew today, and he's interested in us setting up a Zoom call with him. We did get the specifics of the emergency vehicles, so we're going to run that through our site plan. We have a program called Autorturn, which lets us run those through. Once we have those in the plan, we're going to meet with he and the fire chief. So I think that would be an opportunity for us to vet our plan and also look at the aisles and just make sure it meets all of their requirements. At that same meeting, we're going to talk to them about fire hydrants. Right now, there's only one shown on the plan, but we recognize the need to have more, and that's a conversation that we like to have with the fire chief. So either the end of this week or early next week, we will be meeting with them so that we can incorporate their needs and concerns into our site plan. And then I think the last thing I would add was, one of the other comments or concerns that was raised during the department head meeting was DPW and sewer. And we've also reached out to them. So we're hoping that soon we can, we've been working with them gathering information, but we haven't sat down with them to review our plans. So we're hoping to hear back from them shortly, so we can have that meeting as well to sort of vet where we are. And that would conclude the end of my presentation. We're happy to answer questions. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. One last thing. So we have engaged a traffic consultant to do a traffic study. Hot off the press, I received this from our traffic consultant today at about 4:30. They have at least done the, the initial step, which is the traffic count. So they have looked at the ITE, which is the International Traffic Code, that prescribes a standard traffic generation per use. We have an idea of what our peak trips are going to be. So they look at two things. They look at an AM peak, a PM peak, and then they estimate daily trips from the site. So I will submit this to Adam and get this to the board in writing, but I did want to share. So for 60 units of multifamily housing, the AM peak is estimated to be 24 cars. They estimate that's six entering the site and 18 leaving the site. In the evening, it's the opposite. It's, it's a little bit more, it's 31 cars, but it's 20 entering the site. As you can imagine, people are coming home from their day and 11 exiting. So people are, are going about their day and doing other, other tasks. So the AM peak, 24, PM peak, 31, and the total daily trips is estimated to be 460. So one thing that we're talking to them about is this is, this is standard. So this would be based on any multifamily. We feel our traffic will be lower because of having so many, such a high preponderance of one-bedroom versus two-bedroom. This is really just a standard. But what the, our traffic engineer will do is take this information, and they're going to overlay it with their, they're going to look at the, the traffic flow on County Road, and they basically estimate a level of service. And they're going to take our development now and projected 10 years, and they're going to give us a report that says how they estimate this will, will it have an impact, and if so, what would that be? So that is in the works. We wanted to let you know that that's forthcoming. We hope to have that from them in the next couple of weeks. And as soon as we do that, will be submitted to the board. Thank you for reminding me. And with that, we'd be happy to answer questions. That was a lot of information.
Just to follow up on Erin's comments, I think she covered most of the department head comments. But just so that everyone is aware, the department heads do meet prior to applications coming in. We'll meet continually throughout this project. I think Erin hit each one of the concerns brought up by the Public Works Director, the Fire Chief, and the Police Chief. And in addition, we stay in contact with Rob Thorpe from the New London Springfield Water Precinct, as Erin mentioned as well. And at this point, they are, they are satisfied working on the details of the projects and sort of flushing those things out. So I don't think there are any additional concerns. I think at least one of the department heads, I think I saw Jay Lyon, the Fire Chief, come in tonight. So he can speak there, he is in the corner. If he has anything else that he wants to mention, are you good, Jay?
Okay, all right. That's that.
So now, we're at the point in our process where we're going to ask the members of the planning board to raise questions and issues that they might have as a result of the presentation. And Andrew, maybe it'd be good if you stood up at the microphone, and then you could field who might be the right one to answer whatever our questions are and so forth.
Happy to do that.
Okay. So.
I think Joe has one.
Joe? Introduce yourself, Joe.
Yes, my name's Joe Cubitt. Paul, I have five questions, but I'll just do one at a time, and other people speak after each one. I'll do this rotation, because I know Mary Ann has like the three pages of questions over here. So I guess we're going to start with a kind of simple first question. Are you going to have gutters on the building to collect the runoff?
Great question, and no. But we are using perimeter drip edges in order to infiltrate the stormwater. So that was one of the ways that we have kept large amounts of stormwater from running off the site or being collected in a pond. So because they're only two stories, we don't feel we need gutters, and they function best. So there'll just be a perimeter drip edge around the buildings, and those are sized to infiltrate all the water that will run off of them.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have another one?
Oh, I can go there. I don't see anything about any plans for having elevators in the buildings in terms of accessible for handicapped people who might be living on the second floor? Or are you planning to put anybody who is in that situation in a first-floor unit?
So we, we are, first of all, we are putting folks who need, may have accessibility challenges on the first floor. That is the intent. There are not elevators in the building. Without getting too far in the weeds around cost, one of the challenges is, you know, staying within cost caps that New Hampshire Housing, which is our primary funder, has imposed. And that's part of the reason we went with smaller buildings, lower buildings, because it's considered acceptable by them to have two-story buildings without elevators. But, but if somebody were on the second floor and they had a change in their situation and needed to get an accommodation and be on the first floor, we would move them to the first floor.
I noticed on one of the maps, what is the sightline distance to Fenwood? Side of the property. Is that an angle? But what is the shortest distance? And do you have any plans to put any shrubbery or screening material in that space behind building three?
Okay, perfect. So if you're looking at the plan, the closest building to Fenwood, I've measured to the property line, the closest building is 118 feet. The parking is 250 feet. And this is not updated. My other number. Oh, sorry. Building two is 120 feet. Building three is 250 feet. The parking is also 120 feet. What I would say about that buffer is that we're not changing it. So the vegetation that exists there today, we're not cutting into at all. So that is one thing that we purposely have done, is by consolidating the development more in the center of the site, we're not doing any clearing, any grading, any change to the buffer that exists today.
And my, my last question is, are these going to be rental progress with everything included, or will people, people be paying for their individual water and electrical costs?
I'll take that one. The, the cost of rent will include all of the charges. It'll include water, sewer, electricity, and heat. So everything's included in the base rent.
Do you have any ideas what the rents might be?
We are currently looking at rents at about 1,200 to 1,400 for a one-bedroom and 14 to 18 for a two-bedroom. This is why I bring Christina here, because she whispers things to me. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann?
Joe, did you have something you wanted to ask?
No, that's it.
Can you explain to me and to the residents here what it means to have an aisle in the parking? How does that function, and why do we need to be concerned about 24, 26? And what kind of impact does that have to the amount of paving?
Sure. That's a great question. So if you look at the site plans, you'll see the striped parking spaces. So the spaces that you see on the plan are 10 feet wide by 20 feet deep. And then when you back, when you pull in or back out, there's an aisle. So think of it as an extension of the driveway. If you were driving through the parking lot, you're driving on what I'm calling the aisle. And on the plan, they're 24 feet wide. So that's to, that's to allow two-way traffic, and it's also to allow cars to pull in and back out. In addition to that, it's going to have to function for the trash truck to come in and pick up trash and also emergency vehicles. So when I say aisle, I mean the space between the toe of one parking space and the toe of another, which is where you would drive through a parking lot.
Thank you. I think you need to stay up here. There's a notation on the map, the plan, that says bio-retention system. Could you give us a little bit more bio-retention system 101? So we can understand the importance of that. And in that explanation, talk about where the runoff will go, please.
I'm going to go to an earlier slide where I have them color-coded for you and for me. Yeah, so in the world of stormwater, there are what are called low-impact development techniques. So we're trying to take stormwater and treat it or infiltrate it into the ground or keep it in a similar path to what it does today, maintain the hydrology of the site. So what a bio-retention system is, to us, it's going to look like either just grass with a slight depression, or it might be planted with vegetation that likes to have a lot of water. And what it's going to do is the stormwater is going to run to it. It's going to have a little bit of storage, but it's not a pond. It's not designed as a detention pond. It's a small feature. And that water is going to infiltrate into the ground. So it's going to go through that first layer of topsoil or plants, and then there's a layer of like filter media. And that's where it gets, you know, it slows down, it gets treated. It's a mix that's sort of, it's a mix of sand and maybe organics, some things in there to help. to help it have a little bit of nutrients. And basically, we're trying to treat hydrocarbons, things that come off of our cars. And then it goes into the ground, or it may run off a little bit and keep going. So in this case, if you're looking at the parking lot between Buildings Three and Four, the parking lot between Buildings Three and Four, that's a bioretention system. So it just takes the water from this parking lot. That water is going to sheet-flow. It's going to basically run down the parking lot into that area. It's a very slight depression. In small storms, it's going to stay there and it's going to infiltrate. In larger storms, it might eventually keep going, which is what it does today. So that's what a bioretention system is. They're intended to be small and basically help keep water from having to be, you know, funneled together into a big detention pond.
It mustn't be telling me something. They don't want to hear my questions. And so ultimately, you're saying the water gets filtered through that bioretention system space and stays where it ordinarily would or goes where it ordinarily would. You're not really disrupting the hydrologic patterns that are currently present. Is that correct?
Exactly. Yep, exactly. So our stormwater model looked at, you know, where does the water go to today? Some of it goes to the south and continues to flow off of our property line and keep going across the field, and some of it goes to County Road. And so what we've done is we've tried, we've put in these small features to control it in those small areas. We can't just let it run off the pavement. That would be faster than it goes today, and it wouldn't have treatment. So this allows it to continue in that same path. We're going to slow it down. We're going to infiltrate some of it, which balances the pavement where it's not going to infiltrate. And then some of it might run off like it does today.
Magic. Next question. Who's going to manage the gardens and the plantings and, you know, whatever community garden the residents would be utilizing?
That's a great question.
Sure. So Twin Pines will manage the property, and as part of our responsibilities, we'll be working with the residents, managing the community garden space. It's often a project that is, you know, part of the work that our Resident Services Coordination Team does. They sometimes will have access to plant materials that are donated and work with residents to incorporate that into the planning gardens and make sure that, you know, everybody gets a chance to garden, because it's really popular.
Okay. And next question. The ADA parking spaces, there are eight that are identified. Will there be two per building, allocated per building, and will they be close to the entryways of the buildings?
Yeah. So for Building One, there are two right here. They are the two closest parking spaces to Building One. Right now, we have one for Building Two, one for Building Three, and a second one for Building Three. We have to basically have at least one parking space per area, and it needs, the first one needs to be a van-accessible space. So these will all be larger spaces. And then we have two at the community building. So there are eight scattered throughout the site.
Okay. And then also, the accommodation for people with disabilities to reside on the first floor, will those apartments have ADA accommodations internally?
Yes, and I'm going to look at Matt, and Matt can kind of talk about those features and the number of units and his design.
Yep. So there was a previous question about elevators. Just generally speaking, one elevator costs about a quarter million dollars. So four buildings, that'd be a million dollars' worth of elevators, which is not feasible. So what we decided to do was, basically, 50% of all of the units are at ground level. So even though each individual unit may not be fully ADA accessible, they are accessible to get to it. So not everybody, when they have mobility issues or in a wheelchair and need all of those features. So, but in the, in each apartment, there is at least one ADA apartment that's fully ADA accessible. And that would include door widths, 36 inches minimum, to be able to get in and out. Each door has clearances on both sides. So for example, if you have to pull open the door, there's at least 18 inches to allow you to get around it. It'll, there'll be an ADA transfer shower, so that allows you to either wheel into the shower itself or be able to transfer over. The plumbing has clear knee space, so you're not having to do one of these things, do your dishes, you can pull right up. And even the appliances. So an ADA-accessible refrigerator, for example, French door style, so you're not having to get way up and get to the back, microwave everything.
Did you say each apartment building will have at least one ADA-compliant internal?
Correct.
Setup?
Yep, yeah, code requires at least 5% of the building be fully ADA accessible, and that equates to a minimum of one per building. And I'd also like to add that in addition to a fully ADA-accessible unit, there'll be a hearing and visually impaired unit. So what that means is, just as an example, if the fire alarm is going off in those particular units, the siren is infinitely louder, pretty hard to sleep through those things. And that unit would have really big, bright flashing lights. So there's really kind of two units per building that affect, that can support people with disabilities.
Okay, thank you. And Anne, I think I've got one more question for you. When is the traffic study, the, you know, whole shebang going to be completed?
I'm hoping to have it within the next two to three weeks. I'm pushing them to get it as soon as we can. So two to three weeks is our anticipated delivery.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else at this end of the table?
It's this end of the table.
Take this, because you're.
Oh, I'm awesome. I'm fine. Thank you. A couple of questions. It just struck me that the parking, I would be worried about people parking on the ground and stuff. Do you have curbing along the driveways, or do you just manage that?
Yeah, we've tried to minimize curbing. Number one, it's a cost. It's also encouraged in your ordinance. One of the things that the low-impact development stormwater controls require is for water to be able to sort of leave the parking lot without being concentrated. A curb line tends to direct it to catch basins. So long answer to your question, there's not a lot of curbing, except where we have parking spaces directly at a sidewalk. There we do have vertical granite curb. So the rest would need to be managed by the onsite resident personnel. And that's one of the benefits of having somebody living there. We'll resort to signage if we need to. The trees will help discourage that. But we have shied away from forcing curb to do that.
Secondly, we had a nice discussion the last time about the size of the units. And I wonder if you could maybe explain that to the people that weren't here? But also, talk about how that affects expected turnover and, you know, how do you really deal with turnover and stuff in the, in the community?
Sure. I'm going to probably bring a little bit of Matt's time and attention up here, and I know we've got, we've got, if I go back, we can get to floor plan, and he can kind of talk about it. I may be going in the wrong direction, apologies. So these units, and I don't know, Matt, I don't, my glasses do not work that well to be able to see those, that really small writing. But if you want to just talk a little bit about the size of the units, then I can kind of talk about how it compares to what else we've done elsewhere.
Yep. Is there a way to zoom in on this? Can we zoom in on any apartment is fine?
Let me open that PDF version.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Making it look easy.
All right. Yep, so the, even from here, it's a little hard to see, but the one-bedroom apartments are about 630 square feet in, yep, yep. So the, there we go. Yeah, so the one-bedrooms are about 630 square feet, give or take. My memory's not great. The two-bedrooms are about 100 square feet more than that. And generally speaking, I'll just pick this, do you mind zooming in just a little bit more? We can fill the screen with just one apartment. There we go. Thank you. So let's look in this, I'll use this apartment as an example. So this is the corridor door you enter. You would enter directly into the kitchen. So the kitchen would be a full kitchen with upper and lower cabinets. You would have the bathroom on the left with a full tub, a dining room, and kind of a shared dining slash living room, as well as a bedroom. So this being partially, I know finance isn't the right word, but it's a New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority project, and they have minimum room sizes. So for example, each main bedroom has to be 10 feet by 12 feet. So I can't necessarily speak to the retention question, but this is admittedly maybe a little small for New London, but this is, this is a pretty typical apartment size for places like Hanover, Lebanon, very compact. For the passive house projects, the smaller, the better. Passive house, they look at the amount of energy used per square foot per person. So as you would imagine, if I lived in this room, I'm using a lot of energy to live in this room. And we've really worked our best to maximize the size of this space in order to be, to be flexible. The bathrooms as well. So going back to the question about accessibility, I'm sure you've all seen bathrooms a third of that size. So what we've designed is a bathroom where you actually can move around in it. You're not going to immediately bang your knees on the sink when getting up from the toilet, for example. So these are almost ADA-accessible bathrooms. They're not ADA-accessible, but they are almost in the fact that they almost have the clearances at the toilets. If you remove the counter underneath the sink, the sink would be fully accessible. You've got the space at the showers. Of course, a tub shower isn't a very accessible type of shower. We have a different type of shower for the ADA unit. And if, and since we're looking at the floor plan, if you can scroll down, there's two beds on the, on the bottom of the plan. Great, and if you can scoot to the right just a hair. Yep, thank you. So similar situation, you come in from the corridor, you have your kitchen here, your bathroom here, and you walk in and the main, sorry, the main bedroom is here, and the second bedroom would be here. So it is very compact. I know my wife, for example, when she saw these plans, she said, "Where's all the storage?" That's why we're recommending, if you can scoot to the right just a little bit more, we have a storage room where each resident would have their own four-foot by four-foot by eight-foot-tall storage locker. So things like skis, winter tires, you don't, you don't need to keep that type of stuff in your apartment. There would be room elsewhere. And we haven't really discussed this yet, but with the availability of the, of the existing garage onsite, there could be room for additional storage space. Forget who asked that question, but did I answer it?
Paul, I did. I'm sorry, but I did.
Yep.
And I think, Paul, you asked the question about turnover and how we manage that. I mean, typically, within a year, we might see, depending on the property, 10 to 20% turnover. You know, we definitely, we hate to lose our residents, but we also recognize that they may be moving on to, you know, buying a bigger, you know, buying a place or moving to a larger unit, depending on changes in their family composition. And so that's typically what we see, and so we manage an active waitlist at all times and work through that waitlist as on a first-come, first-served basis.
I'll tell you, I have one left. You've made a great point that you're a nonprofit, and I just, I would like to hear how you explain your process for providing for maintenance, but more importantly, future capital repairs, your big expense items.
Yeah, sure. So one of the nice things is when we, the way we finance this is, as I think I mentioned, and I've done some presentations elsewhere in the community to the folks at Highland Ridge and Fenwood, and we talked a little bit about some of the financing. We are using something called the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. So we're going to basically, you know, receive federal tax credits. We sell those tax credits to typically banks. You know, I see Steve Ensign here in the crowd, and, you know, he, he was a big buyer of those credits when he was running Lake Sunapee. The banks buy those credits. They are our partner. They are, you know, riding the development with us. They are a long-term investor. And as part of our, their underwriting process, we are typically capitalizing, we're putting into the development budget both an operating reserve and a replacement reserve. So we make sure that we build the project to a good standard that is energy-efficient, is going to last for a long time, but we also make sure that there's money available for ongoing repairs and maintenance as part of our original development budget. And our investors, the banks, they make sure that we do.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to start, let's, do you have anything, Kate?
I did have a question. Are all the units?
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Katie Vedeva. Good evening. Are all the units rentals? I thought in the other presentation you talked about.
Yeah, these are, these are all rentals. That's, you know, we're, we're really trying to meet a very pressing need in the community. I know we've got, you know, folks from the hospital here to talk about some of the challenges that they're facing, but we're really trying to meet the rental needs in this community. And so we felt that was where we should put our attention with this project.
Thank you. And I was also, I was also curious about the height of the buildings.
Come on up.
I don't have the exact feet off the top of my head, but it's a two-story building with a gable roof. I believe it's 10 feet floor to floor. So without having the exact number, it's probably about a 25, 28-foot-high building to the very peak of the building. But we'll certainly need to get back on, I'll need a fact check myself.
Thank you.
David?
I have a couple of questions, sir. Can a senior citizen that's retired rent one of these apartments?
Yes, they can. So this, this property is what we call non-age-restricted or general occupancy housing. So unlike the project I showed you in Hanover, which is age-restricted, in New Hampshire, it's 62 is typically the age at which one becomes eligible for age-restricted. So I'm almost there. But right now, basically, what our experience is, is that somewhere around 10 to 20% of the folks in a, in a project like this, so I'm thinking about our Guile Hill project in Hanover, about 10 to 20% of the residents may be retired. They have to have sufficient income to be able to afford the rents. You know, again, we were talking $1,200 to $1,400 for one bed. So they have to have sufficient income. Some, unfortunately, some residents or some seniors who have only Social Security may not have enough Social Security. And, and so we have other projects in our portfolio that work for them. But the goal here is to try to create, you know, housing for the workforce, but we don't discriminate on account of age.
And the second question, the people that, that are going to apply and live in these, in these one, two bedrooms, they don't have to work in New London. They can work in Andover, Newport, Bradford, anyplace. Is that correct?
That is true. We're not requiring that they have a job here in town. The hope is that, and I'm sure, you know, Tom Anion from the hospital will probably talk about this, the hope is that putting it right across the street from the hospital that, you know, that we'll have folks who are there because they've got a job across, across County Road, and they're walking to work. That would make me nothing happier, nothing would make me happier than to have that the case. But we don't say you must be only working within 10 miles of the Chrisany Farm.
Jeremy?
I have a question on the bioretention system. Actually, it may be a moot point, because it's only System One, which is in the Big Island Plan. So I think if it changes, this question may not apply, but the typical details are a weir spillway system. Would that be what bioretention one is in that island?
Which one is one?
One is in the loop. It's adjacent to the playground.
Yeah, so the reason that has is it's going into a pipe. We're, we're taking the overflow, because it, because it's sort of landlocked, when it exceeds its minimal capacity and can't infiltrate anymore, we don't want it to run across the parking lot. So that's just to get into that pipe, and it goes into the other system. So normally, they wouldn't have that. That's unique. And that will change. And that will change likely if we, if we move forward with the consolidated plan.
So that one wouldn't even be there?
Yeah.
Okay.
The benefit of that plan is that we have more green space, more open space to the south, where we can do some of these features.
Okay. Second question, is, in your review of New London zoning ordinances, is there anything more restrictive than AOT requirements? Or is AOT more restrictive in every sense for...
They're fairly, fairly similar. I think the ordinance mirrors it quite a bit.
Better tell them what AOT is.
Alteration of terrain for the state of New Hampshire when it's over 100,000 square feet of disturbance. And last question, is there, or are there plans for EV charging in any of the parking areas?
You know, I, I will say, we don't have, we've talked about it internally with the team, and we're putting it in. We are, we are definitely wiring everywhere at all of our projects. And where grant funding is available, we are pursuing EV charging stations. So we, not to brag on the state of Vermont, they've given us $140,000 to add EV charging stations at a number of our affordable housing properties across the state. And we'd be looking, you know, to do the same kind of thing here. But we're wiring everything right now in expectation that we're going to be making the shift over.
Thank you.
Okay. Jana Kidder. I'm sure you all have thought about this with regard to utilities. But I think on everyone's mind is capacity with regard to water and sewer. Do you have, I'm fairly confident that the town of New London has capacity for sewer. But what about water? Do you have a Plan B with regard to that?
Plan B would be that we would have to find, we would have to develop our own onsite water source. And that would require, you know, maintenance and whatnot. So our goal is to hopefully hook up to the water precinct. We feel comfortable that the passive homes will use less water than traditional apartments. So we're hoping that that will be available. It's a fairly low number even for 60 units. But yes, the alternative would be that we would need to develop our own onsite community water system. And that, should we have to go there, would be regulated through New Hampshire DES in terms of developing the well, treating it, monitoring it, you know, annual monitoring each year.
All right, thank you. And then the other thing I wanted to ask you was, I know you all are aware there's a development going across the street. A senior living facility is being, is, has been approved. When you do the traffic studies, are you including what's happening across the street with this study?
Yeah, I'm talking to them right now, letting them know that that, where it is in its approval process and where it's located proximate to the site. So that's one of the conversations I'm having with our traffic consultant is, you know, is it germane to our site and what they would normally do? And if, you know, how do we need to account for that if we need to? So I'm actively working with them. I will have a better answer.
All right, thank you. I'm good.
I'll put it, I'll put it another way. We, we know about the project, and we've made sure that they know about the project and the material that we're submitted to the town as part of that approval.
I have a little list of questions. Exterior lighting onsite and site-wide, but then also in correspondence to the crossings for the pedestrians?
Yeah.
And will those crossings be striped as well?
Sure. So the site will have streetlights for the street. They will be fully downcast and cut off. They'll comply with dark sky ordinance. There will be a light on each building at each egress. And we're proposing bollard lights, so there are sort of low-level pedestrian scale on the sidewalks that take people from the parking spaces to the building. They will all, you know, any of the light poles will be fully cut off. We are not proposing crosswalks. It's not that level of pedestrian connectivity that trips the traffic counts that we would put a crosswalk. But certainly, our lighting design will create what's called a photometric plan. So it's going to show the light levels onsite. And our lighting consultant is designing the site lighting so that there's adequate lighting for safety and that it's, it doesn't have any really hot spots and any really dark spots. That it's consistent, and that's what's most important for safety. So we're in the process of getting that from them, and we'll be submitting that. So it'll show that there's no light trespass to the abutters, and it'll show the height of the poles and what those light levels are.
Next question, bike storage?
Yeah, we, we haven't, we haven't answered that question. I would say it's part of our discussion of how we'll use the garage.
Okay.
But things like bicycles, kayaks, other, you know, recreational equipment that we know won't be able to be stored in the buildings, or the apartment, rather. We're looking at places for those. We do need to incorporate a couple of bike racks at each building. But in terms of bike storage, I think we need to think about if there's a way we can incorporate that into the garage.
You mentioned the solar panels. I just want to make sure you're aware of our solar ordinance. It certainly in the commercial zone encourages roof-mounted versus ground mount. And in fact, medium and large-scale ground mount is not allowed in the commercial zone. So you'll definitely want to try to focus that on a roof-mount system. If you need the ground mount, we can have that conversation and what that might look like.
We're in, we're in agreement that the goal is to have as many on the roofs as possible. One of the reasons why we have the, you know, the solar orientation, why the buildings are rotated, if you will, not parallel to the property lines, which I think at first catches people and they wonder why, and that's the reason. So we will certainly prioritize that. And as Matt's electrical engineer starts to do those calculations, if we need to have a conversation about ground mounts, we'll certainly reach out.
And then just the, on the detention pond here, we talked about the water infiltrating. I mean, after a typical storm, how long would you expect to see standing water?
It really depends on the size of the storm. If it's a two-year storm, say a thunderstorm, it's going to be gone in a matter of hours. It depends on what time of year, you know, is the ground a little bit frozen? Did we just have a really big storm yesterday? But I would say it controls the 100-year storm. So when a 50- or 100-year storm is going to hold water longer. But in the typical storm, a thunderstorm, you know, those are going to be gone in a matter of hours, assuming that, you know, the ground's not frozen or that we didn't just have, you know, a massive storm yesterday.
Thank you.
Any other questions for members of the board? One more, go ahead.
Could you explain the process, the vetting process for people to apply to the project? And what happens when, if somebody gets a promotion or salary, and their salary exceeds the guidelines? What does happen to them?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for that question. I'm going to, I'm actually going to go back, if I, if I do this right, to, to the chart. It's an important point. The, the housing numbers or the, the income numbers that I'm showing up there, those income limit numbers, they are annually, they change annually. So HUD does, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development reviews incomes every year. And as part of that process, you know, they adjust incomes typically up. Sometimes they go down, but typically, more typically, they go up. And I would suspect, you know, I would suspect this year, given the pressure on wages and other costs, we're going to see a pretty significant bump up in terms of income limits. But these are income limits at the time of initial occupancy. So somebody comes to us, they've applied, we've, you know, verified their income, we've looked at their tax returns, we've looked at their pay stubs, and we've looked at their bank accounts. We have to verify all of that information. And as part of the application process, they must meet these limits at time of initial occupancy. But let's say, to your example, in a year, they get a new job or they get a big promotion, and suddenly their, their income goes up, they don't have to move. That's the short answer. There's some, some caveats there. But basically, people's income can grow over time. We want to encourage that. We want people to better themselves. This housing is a mechanism to do that because it allows them to pay a more reasonable amount of their, of their income towards rent. But we, we don't, people don't have to move out.
Okay, what about the downside? Let's say somebody loses their job and they fall below the income levels. Then what, what happens to them?
Yeah, I mean, we're like, you know, we are like every other landlord in the sense that sometimes, you know, people lose jobs and they can't pay the rent. We work with them. We do have, I mentioned our resident services program. We work very closely through our resident services program, trying to make, you know, if there are, it's a short-term job loss, we try to make connections so that people know. If somebody, but if somebody is unable to, we're going to try to work with them and find the more appropriate housing that they can afford, given their change in circumstance.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Well, most of the questions that I had written down, my colleagues have asked, such as the lighting and things like that. Could you tell me, or tell us, what happens if someone is, say, semi-retired, excuse me, and is meeting the income limits but has substantial assets? Because when someone asks the question about whether or not they're going to have charging stations, some of those electric cars are pretty expensive. And, I mean, I'd be like, what, they're living in this housing with a Tesla? You know, that doesn't compute.
The Chevy Boltz. But yeah, no, I think it's a fair question. We do, I mentioned bank accounts and the like. And so there is, there is a, essentially, a review of assets. We attribute a relatively, historically, a relatively modest interest to that, and that gets counted towards the income. But typically, you know, if somebody's got, you know, $250,000 sitting in a retirement account, that, that in and of itself is not a reason that they can't apply for housing. So again, we take, it's taken into account under the federal program. And I know as we kind of work through this, I'll be bringing in our property management folks and, you know, happy to answer, who can more, more accurately and completely answer those kinds of questions. Thanks.
It's all yours, Paul.
Thank you. Any other questions on the board, comments? Okay. So at this point, we're, we need to formally accept the application as it has been presented. So is there a motion to do that?
I move to accept the application as presented.
And a second?
Second.
Any other further comments or questions from the board for the presentation? Thank you. Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Okay, so two informational issues that I neglected to mention at the beginning. First of all, I wanted to mention to you that we have received three letters regarding this proposal. Two of them are in favor of it, one of them is opposed to it. If you wish to write to us, we do read our mail. And so we would love to hear from you. And sometimes it may be easier for you to sit down at the typewriter or the, or the computer and bang out a paragraph or two to us about what you want us to understand from your perspective with regard to this proposal. So we are, we are happy to hear from you in any mode you want to try to tell us or talk to us. First, first...
I would just add to that, we got three more after 4 o'clock today, so there's a couple more to that. And I would just ask, if you do choose to submit them electronically, try to do it more than a couple of hours before the meeting. It gets difficult to circulate them to the board and actually have them have time to review your comments.
The other question that is an important question is that, you know, we, we operate from a list of rules and regulations from the town. And so to tell you that if you look at the town ordinances, it's the ordinance that is entitled "Conforming Multiple Family Units." That's the ordinance that we will be applying to this application. The ordinance that are in that category in the material that is governing the use of land and buildings and so forth for the town in London, okay? So conforming multiple family units, that's the section of the ordinances you want to look at. That's what we're going to be talking about in terms of evaluating this proposal. Okay, so now, you're on. But you remember, you're only on for five minutes. And, you know, I am sure, you know, I think that our presenters, personally, I think that our presenters have done a very comprehensive explanation of what it is they're proposing. But nonetheless, I'm sure that there are questions that people have. And so we want to hear those, and we want to give them the opportunity to, to respond. But remember, I'm going to be slavish about that five-minute rule, okay? So who would like to begin? You're on. And introduce yourself, please. All get up to the podium and introduce yourself when you're on.
So I'm Tom Mannion, President and CEO of New London Hospital. I actually just want to answer some of the questions that were asked earlier around, what kind of people are we potentially talking about who will, who will live in these buildings and work at New London? So we did a deep dive in our information, and we are looking at the limits. We know we have 82 position types at the midpoint of our salary ranges that will qualify for the housing that we have presented here today. Of those 82 positions, that's 285 individuals. So I just want to make, that's about half of our employees would be able to live in these facilities. Keep in mind, these are EMTs, licensed nursing assistants, radiology technologists, childcare teachers, social workers, community health workers, on and on and on. So I do want to make it clear that these folks are vital to our mission, which is to continually improve the well-being of individuals in our region by providing high-quality care to our communities. And I just want to go on record saying that it's, I think that we can all agree these are individuals that are critical to caring for us, for our loved ones, for our neighbors. And if we value them enough, I think that they deserve a chance to live in housing they can afford in this community. So I'm glad that this passed. I just want to go on record saying those things. I believe that's under five minutes. Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you, Chairman.
I'm back there.
Hi, I'm Lou Bowden.
You're on mute, Lou.
Okay, I'm Lou Bowden. I would, I have one comment and a question as a, as a citizen and also as an abutter of that, of the crescenti property. I am absolutely ecstatic. It is about time. It is welcome. I fully support it. Second is, as the Town Emergency Management Director, I do have a question to, to the planners. Is whether there has been any consideration in any part of the building being strengthened for high winds or in case of an emergency that people need to evacuate and shelter in place? And the second question is that whether there has been a consideration to emergency generation power in those buildings? As we have seen in disasters in other, other towns and cities, once a disaster happens that makes that, you know, you have an extended power outage, we can get in serious trouble. We do have a local emergency operations plan. The emergency operation plan envisions New London to probably have, be without power for a week to 10 days. And we do have a capacity for a shelter operation that has the limit of 100 people. And if we end up with the entire community having to evacuate, it blows us out of the water, considering that we do have the, we're not like Concord or Lebanon during the, the only, the only storms that brought New London to its knees, which were the ice storms of 1998 and 2008. The Red Cross was busy in Hanover and Lebanon, and they basically told us that we were on our own. So I would like to know from, from you guys what your plans are, please. Thank you.
There we go. So the buildings are designed to meet current structural codes. So a lot of times when people hear "designed to code minimum," they think, ooh, that doesn't sound good. Structural engineering code minimum is about 3% to 4% over-designed to any event. Not any event, there could be a tornado that plops down right on top of them. But there's a safety factor of between 2 and 4 that's applied to the minimum requirements. With this being a passive house building, we actually test the wind resistance of the windows itself, not just the building. So that makes sure that the windows don't get ripped out so that there's not a breeze that gets sucked in and out of the building during thunderstorms. The, I'll let Andrew comment on the generator. But in the event that there is a power outage, one of the amazing things about passive house... a power outage, one of the amazing things about passive house is its ability to retain heat. We, for each passive house project, there's a number of different passive house certified consultants that get hired. And one example that was given to me on the, the Summer Park project was, because of how thick the walls are, how much insulation is in the walls, and how airtight the building is, the power could go out, there could be no heat for about three days in January before the, the temperature inside would get below freezing. So it's not like my house, where if the heat is off for an hour, I'm getting cold. It's this building holds that heat. That said, I'll let Andrew talk about the, the power.
Appreciate, appreciate the comment. Emergency generators are something that we look at. We did put them in, in Hanover for the senior housing there. And interestingly enough, in Hanover, when they lose power, they lose it like an hour. And so, it is, but it is something that we look at, and frankly, we'll have to look at it, because if we, if we're forced, because of the depth of the sewer main up near the circle, being only three feet deep, if we have to put in a sewer pump station, we'll need to have that on, on an emergency generator. So that's something we'll look, take a look at.
Yes.
Yes, my name's Steve Allenby, and I am here for two reasons, and they'll both be under five minutes combined, so. First, I'm the President of a group called Kirzarge Neighborhood Partners. And during the three years we've been in existence, we've worked hard with other area nonprofits to help build a community where people thrive. And in doing this, we found that there's really key areas that we have to address. One's food security, isolation, mental health, transportation, heating and housing. And if I could only pick one, it'd be housing. Because without housing, you really can't address the other issues. I mean, you just can't do it. So for that reason, we strongly support this project, even though it's just a piece of the puzzle, we think it's a really critical one. The second reason I'm here is to read a letter from Winfried Fenneburg, who's the Superintendent of Schools for Kirzarge. And he was not able to be here, and he, he suggested that I read his letter, and I can give it to you afterwards.
Thank you.
But it said, "Dear Mr. Allenby, in your email communication of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and in your capacity as President of Kirzarge Neighborhood Partners, you asked me to comment about the proposed Long Meadow Commons Workforce Housing Project in New London. While I'll be unable to attend in person the public hearing before the New London Planning Board, you may share my comments below with the members of the Planning Board if you deem that to be helpful. As you may be aware, I've been serving on the New London Housing Commission, which was created for the specific reason of addressing the shortage of workforce housing in town, as well as in the larger Kirzarge area. As a community member, I am concerned about maintaining conditions in New London that favor diversity, opportunity, and sustainability for people residing and working in our town. As the Superintendent of SAU sixty-five, a regional school district comprising seven towns, including New London, I've experienced increasing difficulty attracting and hiring the necessary staff for the operation of the district, in part due to the lack of available workforce housing. I welcome your efforts to support the creation of feasible workforce housing options in town. As the issues raised about the potential detrimental impact of Long Meadow Commons on the schools in the Kirzarge District, I do not share those concerns about overcrowding or negative financial burden. Our enrollment studies in the past eight years, for the past eight years, as well as the next ten years, up to twenty thirty-one and twenty thirty-two, yield a very stable enrollment picture for the entire district, including our elementary schools. Both Kirzarge Regional Middle School and Kirzarge Regional High School would also be able to absorb substantial numbers of new students to the district without any additional staffing or operational cost. In fact, the proposed housing units would greatly aid in attracting potential district employees for hard-to-fill positions, such as pair educators, custodians, administrative assistants, coaches, as well as bus drivers. While the district has been able to fill almost all teaching and administrative positions at the beginning of the school year, we continue to struggle when it comes to attracting employers in the above-listed categories. Respectfully, Winfried Fenneburg."
Thank you.
Thanks.
Comments? Yes. Thank you very much.
I'm Randy Foose. I want to commend you for the work that you're doing, and note that the Planning Board is the only committee in New London that I've never served on. But I'm here to represent a group of really old people. Steve Enzine, Connie Appel, Roger Wells, Dick Dutton, and Mary Beth Angeli, who have all been working on this project, or this issue, for the last twenty years. I'm not going to read the letter, I'm going to give it to you, so that you have it in your file. But I also took the step of checking in with the New London Area Interfaith Council. That's in self-interest on my future. And I have twenty-six signators to a letter saying, "God bless."
Thank you. We appreciate that. Up back.
Thanks, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
I think this is still on. Good evening, I'm Lori Shive. My husband, Mike Morgan, and I own the Blue Loom Bakery in town. It's always a bad idea to follow Randy Foose, but going to try. I appreciate the, the presentation, and I'm excited about the plan for workforce housing. Two comments that I wanted to make is, one, I know Tom talked about, the majority of his staff would qualify for workforce housing in the plan. A hundred percent of our full-time employees would qualify for workforce housing under this plan. The second point is that, in thinking about this, I think for the Planning Board, as well as for the community, the thought is that we're going to have sixty new families moving into town. Please consider that there are a lot of people who are currently eligible for this housing who live in our community right now. We have an employee who, for two weeks, has been going without water because she's living in substandard housing, and hasn't been able to get her landlord to fix the, the well there. People are living here, they're trying to make ends meet, they're trying to make it work. Having something like this in the community is going to be a tremendous benefit to those people who are already here and working. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, my name is Wallace, and I live right next to Jim Crescenti's barn. And I have one issue for the board and the selectmen, is I really believe that it's, it's up to the town to do an independent study on traffic, utilities, everything. Because you've now approved a large housing area across the street next to the hospital, you have an ever-expanding hospital, and I hear there's another good idea floating around about emergency services across the street. So as you go forward, I would ask that you look at the whole picture and not look at anecdotal or isolated projects, and then leave it up to us, or wait till the effects appear for how they all work together. I mean, you want to know about traffic, stand in the hospital parking lot at eight fifteen. So now you're going to add two large housing areas, and I just think it's up to the town to do an inclusive, independent, and transparent study on everything, from water to sewer. I think you owe that to the residents, those of us who live there. I mean, we're not million-dollar lakeside properties, but we do live there. My second is for the developers, is you need to look, a hard look at that place in the winter, because that beautiful west view gets an awful lot of weather direct from Canada. I personally have five-foot drifts up against the west side of my house for a good bit. I also look at, Jim Crescenti has a duck pond there every spring for about three weeks, just off the side of my property in the, in the hayfield. So, it's a lot bigger than this project, looks like a good idea to me, and I would, I support it, and I would appreciate the developers who contacted me personally about a month ago to talk about my issues. But I really think it's up to the town to take an active look and look at everything together.
Thank you. Yes. President.
Hi, I'm Sue Stevner, I'm the President of Colby Sawyer College, and I just wanted to echo some of the other things that some of the organizations have mentioned, certainly in support of this proposal. Of our two-hundred-and-ninety full-time employees, only thirty-two are able to live in New London, and most were able to buy those homes about five years or earlier. Of the hires that we've made since January first, only two have been able to afford to live in New London. Most right now are living twenty-five to forty-five minutes away. And as Tom mentioned, these are all folks that are critical to the education that we provide at Colby Sawyer College. Many positions right now are even hard to fill due to the housing costs here in New London. So, I just wanted to speak in favor of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Yes.
Do you have to push the...
No, you're on. You're on.
Okay. I'm Kathy Dickey, I live at Fenwood Commons. I have some safety, traffic concerns, being, I strongly feel, and I have personal experience, because after I retired, I worked per diem at New London Hospital. I walk to work, there's no crosswalk here. You know, I'm a seventy-year-old woman, I can get myself across the street still, but there are going to be families living in this development with children. And I feel that, safety-wise, we need sidewalks for this area down to the end of the hospital property, at least, and we need to have a crosswalk for safety. The crosswalks really work well to make people stop to let you cross. I find that out every morning when I walk. So, I really think between Long Meadow Commons, the town of New London, New London Hospital, and the plans for New London Place, that people should get together and really consider sidewalk extensions and a crosswalk.
Thank you. Up the back.
Good evening, I'm Bob Bowers. I live in the Fenwood community as well. And first, I want to thank very much Twin Pines and Andrew for making a presentation and bringing us all together and explaining what's going on. It was very helpful. And it's just been mentioned, there are questions were raised and concerned. I also want to thank Twin Pines for their presentation, it was an excellent presentation, it answered a lot of questions. And I like all the research and effort they put into how they've developed this with the heating issues and taking care of concerns that are very, very much on people's minds ecologically, to, to try to protect our environment. I come not with a question, but similar to what was just asked, a request. I raised with Andrew at our meeting the issue of sidewalks. I'm very pleased to see that they have proposed sidewalks that will run from this property to the Crescenti Mall. And I think that's important, he's working with those people to see that that can be approved, and I think a lot of the people from this development will use this. But as they have pointed out, one of the values of this, a development like this with one-bedrooms is the walkability of town, which is also a big issue in the master plan, that walkability is an important thing for everybody in town. That means that the more you can put sidewalks where they're needed, the more you can attend to the issues that have just been raised, the better off we are. Recognizing that putting the cost burden on Twin Pines on a short stretch that runs into the Crescenti loading areas is problematic. But it's also problematic that the town has not adopted any kind of provision that requires development of new areas to include sidewalks. My request is that the developers and the Planning Board work together in a community spirit of trying to provide something good for the town, to come up with a way to at least address that issue. A very logical one would be that Twin Pines presents to the town, and the town accepts, an easement for the construction, repair, and maintenance of a sidewalk on that piece of property between those two sidelines. They don't do it now, but it's there if needed in the future, especially if work is done on the, on a budding thirty acres, so that in the future, if the town found that there was an important need in a way to put sidewalks in that would not only serve them, but the hospital, it would be available without having to go back to the drawing board to try to get that approval. The town would own the right to do it, and I would ask the two work together to try to formulate a proposal of that nature. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, just on the topic of public infrastructure, it's worth noting that as part of the governor's proposal for affordable housing last year, and the hundred million dollars that was set aside in the state budget, there is potential for communities who approve affordable housing projects to receive up to ten thousand dollars per unit. And there's some strings attached about how long the, the process goes to get it through the permitting. I believe it's six months from the start of acceptance of completion of the application, which is the vote that was taken here tonight. So sort of the clock starts ticking now. And the, the town and the board has six months to review this application, and then if it's successfully approved, within that time period, the town can apply to the state for that ten thousand dollars per unit, in this case, six hundred thousand dollars. And there's very little strings attached to what the town can actually use that money for. But the intention of the, the funding is that there will be some infrastructure investment that needs to happen from the municipal's perspective. So in this case, sidewalks could be a fantastic opportunity for the town to say, you know, we have access to the six hundred thousand dollars now through this, this development that has been proposed, and we can target that money to the sidewalk extension. Of course, there are smaller things like a crosswalk from the entrance to New London Hospital. I mean, that can happen within a routine paving budget, or a striping budget, rather, each year. It may make sense for the site plan itself to include a sidewalk that, internally, that leads to the curb on that side, along the entrance road, which isn't on here now, so maybe that's one thing that we should look to, with the understanding that that may come down the road, so that the infrastructure is there to be connected to. But just so everyone is aware, there is potential for some state funding to come in to help the municipalities with infrastructure.
Other comments? Up way up back.
I'm Charlene Baxter, and I am a longtime resident of New London. I live on Hall Farm Road. I love this community, and I love living here, and I am aware that for communities to thrive, workforce housing is a necessity. And I want this community to thrive, as I suspect all of you do. I spent most of my career at the University of New Hampshire, working in community development. And I, I just want to say that I became aware of the work of Twin Pines about a decade and a half ago. And I have seen in the communities that they've become involved, excellence in the work that they've done. So that, I, I thought that was an important testimonial for me to share with you. I just have one question, which is, in, in the other communities that you, in the other developments that you manage, is there a way for the residents to have representation to management? Some kind of a board or some method that they interact with the managers of the project?
Thank you so much for the, those kind words about Twin Pines and the work that we do. It's, it's not always easy, and sometimes it's quite hard. And I appreciate, I appreciate that testimonial to the work that we do. So we have generally not had a lot of representation. I would say that that is not because we haven't tried. Sometimes, you know, sometimes folks are busy just living their lives. And one of the things that I would hope here is that we would be able to foster some kind of resident council association that would be a regular, you know, opportunity for interaction with, with our, with our senior property management folks. So I think that's a great idea. Particularly when it comes to things like community gardens and things like that. The other thing I wanted to, to... The other thing I wanted to speak to is, Bob raised the issue of sidewalks. And just for the benefit of this board, the current sidewalk ends right across from the Crescenti loading dock entrance. There is a sidewalk that comes to sort of the edge of the hospital's property. There's some challenges in that area. There's a couple of trees, one really nice tree right planted in the middle of sort of the right of way where you'd want to put a sidewalk. There is a fire hydrant there as well. But those are things, you know, and, you know, I appreciate Adam bringing up the issue of the town's ability to kind of go after those funds, because I've been pushing that as a way to help pay for those kinds of things, if that's something that this board thinks ought to happen. We believe strongly in the importance of these kinds of connections and have done these kind of connections in other projects. Guile Hill up in Hanover, we worked cooperatively with the town to add a sidewalk along Route 120. Talked a little bit about that with Bob and the folks at Fenwood last week. So there are opportunities to collaborate on that, ways to figure it out. I think having access to potentially $600,000 to help pay for it makes it a lot easier. So thank you for bringing that up, Adam.
And I should just be clear that there's a finite amount of money available there. So it is somewhat dependent on what they get for applications throughout the state. So it is up to $10,000 per unit. I don't believe there is a guarantee that it's $10,000 per unit. So I just do want to be transparent in that.
My name's Linda Hagan. I am also on the board of KMP with Steve. So we face daily issues with housing, and this program would be an integral part in solving the problems that we see in our community. The other thing I'd just like to remind you, I can't remember how many months ago we had a community planning session, and overwhelmingly, I believe, the police station, workforce housing, and affordable housing were the top three interests of the community. So even though they may not be here, I want their voices to be remembered. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up, because in fact, the master plan process, which was led by our vice chair, Jeremy, was a tremendous success in the sense that we received almost, just under 1,000 responses to the questionnaire that we published and sent out in the mail. We also had, you know, a tremendous turnout to the public forums that we had, although because some of them we're having in the middle of July, the numbers went down because they'd rather go to the beach. But in any event, that document is there. And the point that you make is that in that document, it's very clear that this is an issue that the town needs to face. And this is a one way in which it can face this issue, which is to make more housing available to a wider population than it probably is at the present time. So unless there's anybody else that wants to make a comment. Hey, hi.
Hi, Paul.
Tell us who you are.
I'm Celeste Cook. I'm the Town Welfare Officer, which I've been for, I think, about 15 years. I've worked with a great many people in this community who have jobs that they can't afford to find housing. And so they have to travel from Newport, Clermont, places like that. And I applaud this tremendously. It is such a necessary thing. I think it will bring just a wonderful balance to this community and all. I thank you so much for doing this.
Okay. So hearing, seeing, no more hands. Oh, says one way down there.
I'm Kathy Colby, and I wonder if you could review with us as a planning board what your process and procedures are now in terms of how you go forward and make a decision.
Okay.
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So this is sort of the intermediary step that we're in now, the preliminary. So once the plan is flushed out to a point at the preliminary level that the board is comfortable, they take a vote, but it's not a vote for final approval. It's a vote that just sort of seals this portion of the process. And then there may be some recommendations that are taken from that, that the applicant needs to go back and address. And then when they are ready, they submit an application for final approval of site plan review. And so there's essentially a process that looks just like this, that happens all over again. And there's another public hearing, another round of public hearing notices that go out. And then you have the opportunity to respond and participate in that process from there. Once they have final site plan review, it shifts a little bit outside of the public hearing realm to the more sort of behind-the-scenes permitting level, where the applicant would go through the town for the zoning permit, which essentially just means that they're showing a plan that complies with what this board here has approved. And then once that has been satisfied, they actually go to the state fire marshal's office for their building permit review. And that's because in New London, the state fire marshal's office reviews all multifamily and commercial properties. We do not do the building permits for those. And so then once they go through that, and the fire marshal's office handles all of their inspections of plans, but then also their inspections throughout construction for different trades, foundation, structure, plumbing, heating, all those sorts of things throughout the construction process. So it's a very broad-level overview. There's no guarantee that each level of these is one meeting, that it's two meetings. You know, it just sort of happens naturally as far as what needs to happen for response from applicant on planned comments. And just so you're aware, in each sort of section, sort of in the preliminary, if the board were tonight, say, you know, we're going to give you the two weeks to figure out your, you know, which plan you're going for as far as the cul-de-sac, the loop road, get those tied up. And if they continue to the meeting that's three weeks from tonight, I actually think, there would not be further public hearing notice that comes out to you in the mail. The meeting tonight would be that notice. So it's just when you go to the next round of hearings and the final that you will actually get another certified mailer. So sometimes that can create confusion.
It would be noticed.
Right. It's noticed, it's on the town website, it's on the agenda, all of those things. You just don't get another certified mailer. And there's not an official public hearing notice that goes in the intertown record.
Well, I really appreciate all of you coming this evening. And I want to thank the staff from Twin Pines for their presentation. It was, from my perspective, very clear and understandable. And the questions that the board presented, as well as the questions that some of you have raised, have helped to illuminate that even more so, so that's very helpful. This is an ongoing process, as Adam just outlined. And so we'll be, you'll be hearing about other opportunities for you to comment as this proposal gets massaged and changed slightly here and there. So stay tuned.
And so as far as the official action from the board tonight, my recommendation for the board to make a motion, if it's agreeable to the applicant, would be to continue the preliminary until November 15th, knowing that there's not time to get another application in for the final by the 15th anyways. So you'd be looking at the December meeting as the earliest meeting for that application. So you might as well take the two-week continuance to flush out some of the details that you could continue to update the board with at the 15th to bring them up to your most current level. And that still gives you a week to turn around your application for the following meeting in December. So it just allows you to get your application to a, hopefully, a more complete spot in this phase versus even if you were to say tonight that you're satisfied with the preliminary, you're still at a mid-December meeting for your final at earliest. So.
For the benefit of those who may be watching on YouTube, yes, happy to accept that continuance request and continue it to November. And then hopefully, you know, satisfy any additional questions and provide you with the latest update on where we go and have gone with the plans. So thank you for your time and attention.
And so I just want to make clear for the public, because that is varying from our typical schedule because of Election Day. So it is the third Tuesday of the month, that's November 15th, that we would be meeting that night, 6:30, right here at Whipple Hall. And then the target date, and this would all be dependent on their application coming in three weeks prior for final, would be that the first hearing of the final site plan review would start on December 13th. That is subject to change depending on anything that happens between now and then, but that would be the targeted schedule.
Okay.
So we would just need a vote from the board to continue till November 15.
Oh.
Jeremy wants to.
Jeremy?
I'd like to make that motion. I'd also like to, prior to that, say that out of all of the comments, I think it was really important about the crosswalks and the sidewalks, so to keep thinking about that. But I do move to continue this to our next meeting on...
November 15th.
15th.
6:30, Whipple Hall.
Yeah.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any further discussions on that motion? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Thank you all very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you in person. You're bigger than I remember.
Unfortunately, I'm getting too big this way.
Yeah. Boy, we all are. We did a lot of recruiting.
I'm scared.
You can't do this, what are you doing?
Go ahead. I hold up traffic, so I'll let you go first.
Are you making a presentation now? What are you doing now?
We're putting a generator in, and I want to convert the gift shop into a little bar.
The gift shop did have cute things, but it's probably not making it.
Well, it's just, it's seasoning.
Ladies and gentlemen, we need to continue this meeting. So we're delighted to have you chat, but go out inside, out there someplace.
I want to, I want to continue the conversation.
That was Tom that came up and asked. I think he might have had to run to the bathroom. So we can run through a couple other things while we're waiting for him to come back in to present his application.
Oh, all right. All right. So we're going to continue now with our adjutant.
So I think Tom Chadwick has sat through that whole thing, but I think he needed a second. So he'll be back in in a minute, but maybe we could just go through a couple other things real quick while we're waiting for him. So just a reminder, everyone, 7:30 on Thursday morning to continue the workforce housing overlay review with the Housing Commission. I sent that out to everyone this afternoon. So hopefully you should have the latest draft to take a look at that. I think this Thursday, yep, the 27th. So this Thursday, my 7:30, my anticipation is that the consultant will give a quick overview of the changes that he made from the comments that happened last week. And then we will really jump into a dialogue between yourselves and the Housing Commission and sort of flushing some of those things out. Other zoning amendment issues, I think we should potentially look to schedule a work session in November for non-workforce housing-related zoning amendment so that we can go over some of those things when we don't have a packed agenda. And so I guess that was good use of that time. Tom's back, so we can shift back.
Okay.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I would like to, I know we broke from that of the one, but as a business owner in town too, I'll just make a really quick comment on the need for housing, non-income-tested housing. Because my wages at our business have gone up so much that we actually have, our key positions in our business wouldn't actually qualify for this housing. So just as another thing to, chefs are, so the chefs that I'm hiring now are at, their wages are at $65,000 a year. And so one bedroom's at 55, they wouldn't qualify. And chefs are by far the hardest position for me to fill. So just as a quick note. And then on to this. So Tom, so Tom Chadwick, President, Proudstone Corporation, manager, Peter Christians Tavern. And my request is for an installation of a generator. Is this, is this a lighter?
It should be. Did they maybe shut it off?
So, generator.
Here, yeah. Hold on. Give me just a second, Tom.
A generator right there, right behind our propane tanks. We haven't lost power very much. Fortunately, no one doesn't lose power very often and not for very long. But there's, there is a, there is an expectation for people that are staying in the inn that we have a generator. And the reactions to not having a generator have been overwhelmingly negative. And we feel at this stage that it's important to have that feature. Plus, the refrigeration for the restaurant, if we were to lose power for an extended period of time, given the amount of inventory that we have on at any given time, would be expensive to replace if we didn't have power. So those are, and then general safety too, for general safety reasons to have the generator on. And that's the first part of our request. The second part is coming back to ask to convert the gift shop into additional bar seating. The gift shop has been, has been successful in its own right, but it's really proven to be a seasonal business. It really, and right now, we're just open on Fridays and Saturdays. There's really no traffic to it other than the weekend and the prime summer months it was effective. But it seems like the demand for space right now is really for more communal congregation space where people can be social again. So, Adam, if you can go down to the next page for me, then just, and then over. And just to turn that, the inside of the gift shop into just a little, what we're likely going to be calling the shed, the shed at PC's. Just adding some bar seating into that space.
Tom, can you give just sort of how you envision this being utilized?
Yes. So the reason for doing this was that we haven't been, so it's been very difficult to staff. So easier to staff with, if, in this conversion. And the, there is electrical, there's been electrical to this for a long time, which we restored back in 2020, but there is no plumbing.
there's been electrical to the, to this for a long time, which we restored back in 2020, but there is no plumbing. So we will have to run plumbing to it. And then, just, and then other than that, just as it's diagrammed, we would put a ADA bathroom in. The ramp, the entrance, the ramp and entrance into the building is already ADA. And we would just add the ADA bathroom and then the bar seating. And that wall, that bare wall there, we'd probably still use that wall for some, some, some displays or something for sale, mustard, you know? I mean, that's what most people, most people bought, the biggest selling thing in the gift shop was mustard.
It's good stuff.
But, you know, it, it is, it's great stuff, we could sell, I mean, we can sell the mustard anywhere, really. So, I mean, I'm not minimizing the gift shop, the gift shop is, and people have liked it and it's done well, but it's proving to be very seasonal, very difficult to staff. And we feel this would be a more productive use for the space. And he, that's, and that's my basic presentation, yes.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the? Yeah.
I have a question, Tom, were you providing food service for those people at the bar?
So, so just, so we do, we do, we have takeout pizza now, so we would bring pizza, it'd be limited. We have to have some food service by, by law, we have to have some food there, so people can order pizza and we'll bring the pizza over there. And we might have some other just bar snacks and stuff like that. But I want, but to answer your question, it's not going to be the full restaurant menu.
Would you, oh, I'm going to jump in, would you rent that out separately? Like, could people reserve that space, is that part of the plan?
Sure, yeah, for private parties and stuff.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the space in there, so with the bar, would there also be room for tables? I'm just curious about your proposal.
Well, there, there is, but I, I don't. I think, I think it'd be cramped with tables up against that wall. And plus, I didn't want to, I didn't want to request another parking variant, I think we're at our parking. I don't want to, I didn't want to request to change parking again. You guys have already given that to me twice. So, and plus, you know, we, we, looking in the space, putting tables in there, I think it would just be a little bit too crowded.
And with my department heads meeting, the fire chief and I discussed about the occupancy permit, which, so it's a little bit funny, but the occupancy of a building does not always correlate to what we approve for seats. And so he thought that even, even though that is oftentimes the case, it would probably land somewhere in the eight to 10 people, just given the small size of the building. So there probably just isn't the capacity to have additional seating.
Yeah, we're going to kind of treat it like a small little sports bar. We're going to put, we'll put TVs, TVs up, and we kind of hope it will be one of those places where, you know, people will kind of try to get to, as they get off work, to get the games on and stuff like that. Order pizza.
And so what's the sort of mechanism for controlling, I mean, I would assume it'll be popular enough that you'll hit eight people pretty quickly?
Right, right.
I mean, will you have a hostess that's standing there?
There'll be, it's such a small.
Or just the bartender that says we're full, or?
When you open, when you open the door right there, the bartender's going to be right there as you open the door, so.
Would this have different operating hours compared to the rest of the restaurant?
So the plan, the, so the answer, so the plan is to not do that, but we're going to see, just see how the occupancy flows. I mean, I don't, I want to, I want to say that we'll be, right now the restaurant's 12 to 9, seven days, and I would want the bar to be that, but the bar might not be open during the day, some days of the week. And we might open it at 4 o'clock instead of opening it at noon. Which, well, again, we'll have to see what the, what the community, how the community wants to gather there.
Have you discussed the water line and sewer line extensions at all? With, I didn't realize that there wasn't plumbing in there existing.
I can't get, so normally I would have more information on that already, but I literally cannot get a plumber to return my call or come to the site.
Yeah.
You wouldn't open that without that, though, would you?
What's that?
You would not open.
I couldn't.
No, right, okay. I wanted to be sure you understood that.
No, I, yeah, I have to have, I have to have a bathroom there, and the bar would need plumbing.
What if?
But there is plumbing at the end of, obviously, there's plumbing within proximity of the building because of the, the back part of the annex.
What if all the seats are taken at the bar and other people come in and they just want to stand? They're, they're not going to be allowed to do that, or?
I think, I think, no, the answer, we really can't, because if we allow it, it's the, the people, they're just going to jam themselves in there. So, I mean. You know, if we allow two to four people to stand up in there, you know, just before you know it, there'll be 20 people in there, and it's just, that's not what we're shooting for. I mean, first of all, it's not safe, and second of all, it's not really, we're not going to be staffed for that. It's just not going to be set up for that.
On the water and sewer issue, so you're probably going to have to have an engineer draw up the, the plans?
Yeah, I've already talked to Frank about that.
Okay, not only for our own Public Works Director and Water Precinct, but as part of the Fire Marshal process. So what I would recommend, when the board gets to the point where they're thinking about a motion for approval, that we have a condition that sort of ties the zoning permit portion for this structure, sort of leave the generator as a separate project, because I know you might be more anxious to get that in versus this. So that some sort of satisfactory review and report from both the Public Works Director on behalf of the Sewer Department and the Newland and Springfield Water Precinct be received by the town before we can sign the zoning permit for compliance on this. But that you could actually go for two independent zoning permits, one for the generator so that that doesn't hold up that side of things, which I know you're eager on, and one for the sort of bar conversion side of things. Even though it falls under one site plan review, we can break the projects up from here.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Just a question, have you run this by the Alcohol Bureau?
Not yet. But they were out to approving the pavilion. I don't, I don't anticipate that there would be a problem with, with the, with the liquor commission.
Okay.
But I can have them come out and get, and get a.
No, I mean, it's up to you, I mean, it's going to be conditioned on having a liquor license for it, so.
Do you have to have a separate license?
No. No, this is, this is still going to fall under Peter Christians, the restaurant.
Adam, can I just ask about parking? In terms of the extra seats here, I know you're not asking for a waiver, because we've granted it before, but what's the, in terms of seats being used here, and then you think about the pavilion and all this other stuff, like, how does this all interplay?
So the, the total required is 54 cars, and they can provide 52. And so there's obviously some parking already dedicated to the retail use, so that can be converted. And so it's still a waiver of the two parking spaces, which is what the waiver was before, it's just now calculated with a different parking coefficient.
Other questions?
Adam.
One other question, sorry, would the lighting change on the outside? Because I'm guessing that the hours of this would be different than, assuming you keep the, you know, noon to night, if pretending that this would stay open as late, would that be different than the retail hours were?
I don't, I don't, so I'll check with, I'll, I'll check with chief, but I, we have pretty vibrant lighting on there right now.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, because it seems to me that you'd be at the bar later than the gift shop, but that was just supposition.
There's.
That's maybe speaking from experience, but that's.
There's a, like a.
And there's floodlights on the sides, and, and then lights in the front.
Yep, so as long as the exterior entrance has the light over it, I think that's the only one that code requires, right, Jeremy?
Adam, do we need to condition it since it's required for the building permit on the state Fire Marshal line?
I think so, because we shouldn't be issuing our local permit before our local department heads are satisfied with it. Because the Fire Marshal's side may have a totally different opinion on what they want for sewer.
Okay, thanks.
I don't think they will have a drastically different opinion, just not to, I don't want you to think you're going to get five opinions, but, but I think we do want to make sure we have that ability locally.
What are we doing?
So, so first of all, you'd have to vote on the waiver for the parking, and then should that be approved, then the two findings of facts, and so this is something new, Tom, that the law changed, so we now have to identify this sort of finding of facts as to why this meets our regulation and why it can be approved. And so this is a pretty simple project, so there's only two. And so the site plan requires, approval of the site plan would require the waiver of the two parking spaces. Upon issuance of the waiver, the parking permitted as proposed would be satisfactory. And two, the proposed generator site complies with sideline setbacks. And so if someone wanted to make a motion to approve the waiver of the.
Could you just back up? The approval of the generator would be what? Would be required what? Compliance with the sidewalks?
No, sideline setbacks.
Oh, sidewalk, okay.
Yep, sorry.
Is it two separate motions?
Right, so first we would take a motion for the waiver of the parking.
Is there a motion?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
We're just essentially ratifying a previous waiver that's already in existence, right, Adam?
Correct, with a new use.
Continued use of the waiver.
Sure, yes, it is technically a new waiver, so I want to make that clear, but yes. It's no different than a waiver that was previously, it's just there's a different use that is necessitating that waiver this time.
But the numbers are the same.
Right.
So, understanding that. Motion is?
I move to approve to continue the new. Nope, so you, you move to approve the waiver of two parking spaces? Okay, I move to approve the waiver of two parking spaces.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposition? Good.
Okay, so now with that waiver being approved, you've met the, the finding of fact there, and so you could make a motion to approve the application as presented with the condition that the, prior to a zoning permit being issued for the change of use from retail to bar, that the New London Public Works Director signs off on the sewer extension, and the Springfield Water Precinct is satisfied, New London Springfield Water Precinct is satisfied with the water extension, and that the generator can be applied for on a separate zoning permit that is not required to wait for those approvals.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, so what else do we have to do? Other than talk about me here. So our next meeting, our next scheduled meeting will be on November 15th, but don't forget that we have a meeting the day after tomorrow at 7:30 in the morning.
Here?
Here, same place, yeah. And we'll be getting more specific in terms of what we're into. It seems to me that what we have to do on, on Thursday, as, as the planning board, is help, we now have in front of us, Adam sent to us this afternoon, I guess it was, an edited form of what they're proposing. And, so please look over that in the next 24 hours before we meet again on Thursday morning at 7:30. And I think we need to be asking ourselves in the meantime whether or not we want to buy, buy all of that, some of it, what we want to do with that proposal as it stands at the present time. Personally, I think there are things in that that are probably have the potential for poisoning the pot, so to speak, if we were to propose those, so anyhow, that's my personal opinion.
Paul's saying, it would help me to get my hands around all those things, two things. One, a list of all the things in our zoning regulations that this changes. In other words, what can, what does this do in terms of what you can build in each zone?
I'm not following exactly, because it's a, it's not, in some ways it doesn't impact each one of those zones independently, it's just the workforce housing.
I understand, I understand, but for example, previously you couldn't build multifamily in two acre zone.
So you're just looking for the, the red line?
No, I, I mean, I just think if you had the zones, and this is essentially what you can build, it would be, it would be clearer.
Okay, I can relay that to the consultant, I know it's something I won't have the chance to do before Thursday.
And the other thing, and I was trying to parse through this, is it would be great if we could take one, two, or three parcels that exist in the town, and delineate what could change for those parcels. And where I, where I stopped is I, I'm looking on Main Street, and we have some multifamily housing on Main Street. And I don't know exactly, I haven't looked to see exactly what the acreage is, but if those three parcels were bought up, could you actually put a 36-unit box of garden apartments on those three? I mean, that's where I'm having trouble envisioning the indirect effects of what they're proposing.
And I think those are, I think this is a good conversation to have on Thursday morning, so that their consultant can respond to some of those, because I think really he is the best, the best person to do that.
Okay, well.
He's the one that's drafted it, he's the most familiar with it, that I think he could do that. And we can have an additional work session if we need to, you know, not all the answers necessarily have to happen by Thursday, so. Because I think those are important, you know, they're good points to visualize it.
I just would make the comment, and I'll make it again on Thursday morning, as you read this, think about how this is going to fly in the town meeting. That's important.
Or it won't fly in the town.
Well, not the whole thing, but I mean, I think you have to take it almost by piece by piece by piece.
Right.
And there are certain things in there, but I personally think, you know, could poison the pot, so to speak, so. We need to talk about that at the meeting on Thursday.
Can I ask a question here? Would it make sense for us to get another meeting scheduled at this time? Just because this is going to be a working meeting and we need to get this resolved?
It's probably a lot more complicated than what we can do tonight, based on the schedules of the consultant and the Housing Commission, but that probably is something we should look at for November. So maybe that's something that the members here come to Thursday morning's meeting with some dates that might work for you, and we can. It might be something that's best through a doodle poll or something, just because there's so many people involved, but.
Okay, so there's one other thing that I want to talk about, and that is that I would like to retire as the Chair of the Planning Board. I've been doing this for a long time, and I, I know that historically there are people that were Chairs of the Planning Board for 14 years, 18 years. I'm really not at all aspiring to match any of that. So, I, 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 you know, I could just say simply, it's been a pleasure to do this, I've enjoyed it, but I'm also a person who believes that there's a time and a place for everything, and I think my time and a place in this particular chair is concluded. I'll continue to serve on the board as a member, but I don't want to be the Chair. And so, at the next meeting that we have, the next formal meeting that we have of the Planning Board, we will, you will and I will elect a new Chair. And I would like to suggest that Tim be the guy that you give careful consideration to to take that job. He's willing to do it, which is also very important. Oh, my term, I, I think, I don't know, to be honest.
I think you'd actually just re-upped, so I think it's 2025.
So, so I mean, I don't want to be doing this in 2025. If I'm still here anyhow.
When would you, when would you want to retire? I mean, like, when would it be effective?
Right now.
Well, not tonight, this is not an official, this is rewarded.
I mean, I, I don't, I would like to, by, by, how about this, how about by Thanksgiving, I would like to be just a regular member like you. Okay?
Do we have to vote on that, Paul?
Yeah, you do, at the next meeting, well, you don't have to vote on what I'm going to do, because I'm going to do it. But, but you do need to vote on, on a, on a person to take the leadership role. So we'll do that at the next meeting. Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Move, let me do that.